Some works.
It's too late.
Here?
Here.
Here.
She can't get in there.
Who is she?
Jack.
You know, the last time she did that, I drove by and noticed they built a...
Does anyone have...
...by accident, about building from there? Anyway. Everyone read the...
Does everyone have a...
Did you know I'm gonna do that? Oh, okay. It surely did not match somewhere. Surely it did.
Everyone read the minutes from April 25th?
Yes.
If so, if there are no corrections or changes to be made, they stand approved as presented. Let's...I need a motion to amend the agenda, please.
I'll make that motion to amend the agenda.
Second. Second, all in favor? Mrs. Porter?
Well, since we didn't get to whether the fireman's reports last night, we ended April at 1.8 million, nine...91, almost 1.9.
Here's the...
I was really excited about that. So I'm hoping you're a girl. I'm hoping that maybe this next month we can actually get 1.9, I'm hoping.
That apple will let?
Yeah, I had learned one. Larry's calling for two over here. So we'll see. I doubt that, but...so stay very steady. You also received some information about the proposed budget for fiscal year 2018. Hardly work at that point. Total expenditure proposed at this time is 11,885,141. In actuality, it's pretty similar to what we had last year. The big difference there, which is about 800,000, is the airport project. We had to send the component of the project when it's done. We had to book the entire project, not just the 90,000 that we're going to contribute to it. So that's why...so you'll have an 800-some thousand dollar expenditure, but you've also got 800-some thousand coming in in grants than our side on it. The budget hearing is scheduled for Monday, June 12th, at 10 o'clock here at City Hall, and then the next night at the board meeting on June 13th, because we'll consider it part of the... If you have any questions about or any more detail, I have lots of them to make.
What's the latest word on the airport beginning?
The end of June, like 20th to 29th of June.
Just almost end of the next budget.
Yeah.
I give what time it's here?
10:80. And we will have a notice and that will go...
You and I were just talking about something. I was trying to remember. Sitting in there, pointing at your desk.
When, Ted?
About 15 minutes ago.
You've had four phone calls since then.
The Graham property. Sue called me and wanted us to price it, and I said, "Oh, I didn't have any idea they were wanting to sell it and figure out what they wanted and get back with me." And I hadn't heard anything from them. The one piece of property which was up in the northwestern corner, I told Sue she needed to get a hold of that sister if they were gonna price on it. Those are the two pieces that actually touch the cemetery, so I hadn't heard from them.
When is the barbecue, is it? We're gonna tell them about that. Harley the O's Art.
Oh, yeah, that was it. That was one of them. What day is it?
Thursday.
Is this Thursday?
Thursday.
Yeah. Harley O's Art's barbecue, serving lunch down the middle of the square, just about where I fell, left my mark. So I told somebody, I said, "Tanya's gonna take a roll and put a checkmark for your name if you don't show up. She's making the rounds today." I haven't asked her lately how many employees she's got, but it's over 100, full-time and part-time employees. And we don't think of them being that kind of an employer, but they are. And when I was out there on a daily basis, when my mother was there, she was running anywhere from 45 to 60 in census and patients, and that's 90 with people waiting to get in. And an able place, the last I knew was full, which it was not at the time that they bought it. So she deserves a lot of credit for that. The cleanliness of the place is different. I mean, when you step in, it's...you done your job. Verizon. Well, you know, they came down, they sent some company down to determine the stability, and they say that they're...I think that is the southwest support they're based. They questioned that, so they were gonna do an analysis and pray over it or whatever they were gonna do. So I talked to James Cardinal yesterday, and in regard to the contract, we're still in...they'd made a proposal, we're still in...talking about what they will pay for the tower. And I mentioned to him about a different kind of contract and also talked to him a little bit about painting outside of the tower. And those are all things that are negotiable, and he acknowledged that they were things that we could talk about on down the line, provided the water tower didn't fall over in the meantime. And I said, "Well, I don't think those guys have been back." "Oh, yeah," I said, "they've been back." I said, "Well, they have to have a key to get in, and we haven't had the request." Got the request yesterday. They'll be down Thursday, maybe. I'm not sure what they're gonna do. If they come down and get the key, we'll have somebody up there with them, so we can... So that's kind of in limbo. Hogan, who's gonna do the work on the tower inside, told me that if we arranged to have it painted, that we wanted to do that before the antennas were put up, that it increased the cost 15,000 to 20,000. He also mentioned that when you have different companies work on that tower, that sometimes antennas are put in the wrong place, sometimes supports are put too close to the ladder, and I'll... We'll talk about it some more, but I'm wondering about just saying that anyone who does welding or anything up there like that with the antennas needs to be holding. He's a nice guy, a nice guy to work with. But that may be something I want to consider to be sure we've got some consistency about what goes on up there. Anyway, Verizon and the water tower is in limbo for the time being. We did finish the end of the sidewalk, the one that goes in front of the... Actually, it's the one that goes in front of the barber shop.
Michelle.
And the beer shop.
Michelle Stat.
Michelle Stat. Got that done, and it really did a good job. And Jeremiah said, "How about a sidewalk across the street?" And I said, "Ah, you know, if you ever look at a sidewalk, it's awful." And I said, "That's not the worst one." I said, "The worst one goes from MFA to the Legion Village, I think's the worst one." And the one from Harrell in front of utility, C Utilities, is pretty lousy. Anyway, we got that done, so that was a small improvement. One of the things in the budget for this next year, and I asked Peggy to put it in if she could, and that is some money to remove houses. And it's a long process to remove a house. You have to go in and you have to find out really who's on the deed, who owns it, find out if there are any liens against it. And most of these, we're gonna find, we're the ones that have the lien, because we've been mowing the yard. And then you have to have so many days' notice and have a hearing and so many days' notice, and then you can do that. But the problem at the end comes with who owns the lot and what's gonna happen to the lot. Are we gonna end up having to mow the lot? So I haven't really come to terms with the lots and, for the most part, where those kinds of houses, where those kind of houses are, the lots aren't worth much. It's gonna cost 5,000 to 6,000 to tear it down and to clean up the lot, you know? Most of the time, the lot's only worth something to people who live next door. However, but two houses side by side, pretty good sized lots that are just awful. But anyway, that money's put into the budget.
Do we get a lien along that even though they're not worth anything? What they are worth, we get, I mean, to try to get those. We could build something.
Well, if we own the lot, we could.
Well, I'm saying...
Or if the owner sells the lot.
But I mean, if we go in and tear the house down, we recoup our money through the lot.
If it's sold.
Yeah.
But if the same person who doesn't take care of the house, and many times, will not take care of the lot. So we're still over there mowing the doggone thing. So we'll see how that works, but we've got some money in there for that. We talked about ISO ratings. And we talked about...Keith and I today talked about the value of the ISO rating. And Noel had suggested that we maybe look at some of the smaller, more important things that might help lower the ISO rating, if that's what we're trying to do, other than just buy a truck, a pump truck. So what, you wanna give us a little information that you read in there?
I did a little bit of research and talked to insurance, local insurance agent today on ISOs or the Insurance Service Office, which, of course, it's an organization, profit-for-profit organization that collects data in these communities, sells that data back to insurance companies. Some insurance companies use that and some don't. For example, State Farm doesn't, they don't use that. They use an actual loss basis per zip code for their...to adjust their premiums. So some insurance companies use it, an ISO rating, some do not. However, this one local company said, "Yeah, they use ISO ratings." And we found out that Seymour just recently went from a seven rating to a five. So I said, "Well, let's look at the property there and see how much difference it made in their insurance premium by going from a seven to a five rating." And he pulled up a property, and it's three-bedroom brick home, two-car garage, pretty standard property. And that property owner saved $8. And I thought, I thought we were looking at maybe 8 or 10% savings. I mean, that would be, that would be worth pursuing. And he said, "Well, in this particular one, it made $8 difference in their annual premium, which is not much." And he also said that, you know, insurance companies are not bound, because you have a certain rating, to give you a premium based solely on that ISO rating. They can adjust it as they please based on area and actual loss.
Suzanne, the thing I had forgotten was I was gonna call the fire chief at Seymour if you write that down, get that known before the meeting, but that's what it was.
Yeah, and the agent told me there are a lot of things that a community can do to lower their ISO rating, other than, you know, a fire truck. There are many things. I think one reason Seymour was able to go to a lower ISO is because of the amount of training that their fire department was doing. And they're actually looking at buying some land up there and putting in a training area for their firemen. And that helped their ISO rating considerably. So I think there are other things that we can do that, you know, a new fire truck would be nice, but I think there are some things that cost a lot less that we could do to improve our ISO rating.
I'll call the fire chief and report back.
That's not helping or... So I think wasn't that last meeting, and we just told them it might be 8% to 12%.
Yeah. And that might have been true for certain particular insurance companies.
Considerable difference.
Oh, yeah.
Although my house insurance was with this local agent that you were talking about. He didn't even ask about it. I mean, it wasn't even an issue in talking about home insurance. So I had a bunch of fire departments in my neighborhood last weekend that had their lights on, and I went up to see what was going on. It was Scotty and several, several fire people, and they're checking every single fire hydrant for pressure. And they're writing down everybody. He said, "We got 200 and some fire hydrants." He said, "We're gonna check every one of them and check what pressure we've got, gallons per minute."
And that all, that will affect the ISO rating also, the pressure on those fire hydrants.
They were doing that all the weekend. They were out there on Saturday morning. Well, he's, he's real big on training.
And they might give it the ISO and have them come down and just kind of walk us through, you know, this you can make an improvement, this, if you did, it wouldn't help you that much, and find out like what the service life is. Because some places, I was, I looked online, like the firefighters, it says like 20 to 25 years. The ISO doesn't really actually use that, it doesn't seem. Theirs is more based off of the pump certifications and other stuff like that. It might be good to walk through with him to know firsthand what we need to do and what we don't.
I'll call the fire chief over there. I'll start there and then...
And lighting.
Yep. Street signs, I think the whole east side, maybe two or three exceptions, the whole east side, all the signs are up. So it's southwest will be the next section I think he's gonna do.
Since, since we do have this signed up, and then she probably will write something. I know Keith had called and asked about it. Do you wanna tell them about the post office and where we're at with...
I didn't even want to think about it, really.
Well, it's definitely just as far as waiting until they get the letter before they...
Well...
Because it'll be...
I didn't, Jennifer didn't understand, I didn't understand either. The gal in Kansas City indicated, she's talking about the block and zone and all this kind of stuff, and it was difficult for me to understand why, if Route 7, like 7061 was correct, why 404 Posey wasn't gonna be correct, because the house didn't move. And she tried to explain to me, and I didn't understand it. I finally just said, "Well, those that we don't have that are correct, let us know. Put in the ones that are correct." So that's where we are with it now. We may have...we still can make the street change. But those where we may not be able to make the mailing address change right now, we can pull those letters and redo that letter to them, and that's what we'll have to do. I don't have, I don't know how many it's gonna be, you know? It may be two dozen, it might be 50, I don't know.
They just need to wait till they get their letter in the mail before they do any changes on their...
Yeah, we're still waiting, we're still waiting. She thought by Friday she would have all of them in that were correct. So those letters will go out, but we don't have any idea how many there are gonna be, because we don't know how many she says are incorrect. And at this point, we don't know exactly what we're gonna need to do to correct it, but we will. Now, that's where we are, the post office. The pool, pump went down on the pool about a week ago. Toby took it apart, tried to fix it, couldn't be fixed. We've taken it to Springfield and ordered a new seal kit. We had to order a new motor, which we got. That pump circulates the chlorine and hydrochloric acid to keep the pH down. So we've ordered it. It's been at least a week since we ordered it. And Sherry's been in contact with Independent Electric here over there in Springfield and trying to find out when the thing's been shipped and when anticipated arrival is. And they've kind of dragged their feet, which has made Sherry think it hasn't been ordered. Well, I called this evening at 5, 3:05, and got the man who runs it and told him our concerns, and so I'll find out in the morning about it. So of course, Sherry's in a dither, supposed to open Saturday. And we can, it takes two days to fill up the water. So we can in the morning begin to fill it, and I'll make that decision tomorrow after talking about the pump. We can fill it, and we can use a chemical to keep the pH down, and we can do that and jockey around with that for about five or six days at the most. Then you're gonna have to drain the pool. And when that happens, we'll sit there and wait till the pump comes. So that may be, that's one option. The other option is to not open. And in which case, we thought we nominated counsel and do go down and sit in front of the pool. But that's where we are with the pool, so we'll make some kind of decision in the morning. But I suspect the decision is gonna be...
The pool on the west side?
That is on the... We probably would take one from each side.
They gotta be somewhere.
Don't be picking on Noel. So anyway, that's where we are. But I'm inclined to add water in the pool on Saturday, you know? And then, you know, it'll cost us if we have to drain it to fill it back up, but... Anyway, that's where we are, so we'll make that decision in the morning somewhere. She submitted to us a list of people to hire and guards to hire and salaries, and we've already done that on February 24th.
We did. One of the things she asked me was, even though she said she would have some new staff and pay increases, did we need to list and do a motion just for the names that are on the list? Just for HR personnel?
Is it not the same list that she submitted before? Well, let's do the list. Take a look at it and do a motion to... Yeah, I just looking at it.
So we're here?
All of that is contingent upon the training, being, becoming qualified.
Okay, so are we gonna have to pull Bridget's name out? And let them look separately on Bridget and then also on Lauren Merkethall?
Mendel.
Mendel, sorry. Mendel.
Lauren.
Because that's normal.
Nice.
So there's two, like pull them out, or just abstain?
We can do it, although I think both of them are far enough removed, shouldn't be an issue.
No, I don't think so.
Did we decide they were?
We already said that they were. Bridget is on that.
Well, not for, not for you.
Even for me, for me.
That's Keith. You'll have to vote on that.
Same with him on Lauren's.
But momentary, there's probably...
Lauren's for him, yeah, we'll be part for you guys.
But in Bridget's case, there's two of us that can vote.
Okay, so we're gonna leave Bridget out and... Unless, unless have a motion to approve all who asked.
I still make the motion.
Okay, your second.
I'll second the motion.
Hey, y'all in favor?
Aye.
Except for Noel, he's abstaining.
Yeah, he's staying. Let's, let's do Bridget. Take the motion to hire Bridget.
I make the motion, I hired Bridget.
Okay. Okay.
I will abstain.
I'm staying. Okay, all in favor, two in favor, two against, and I break the tie, okay? Let's, let's see the girls.
Then I'll make a motion to hire Lauren Mendel.
Well, yeah, they put Lauren in that big fight, he just abstained.
We had a request from a company. I stuck this on her, that solar deal. Wanting to put a solar farm out north of town, had to land located, about 20 acres. Generally speaking, the way that works is normally the way it works. MPUA, our supplier, that would be hooked into them, they would be selling their electricity to our supplier. That does not give us any financial advantage at all, nor any financial advantage for anybody who buys the solar power. It's environmentally proper. There's your advantage. You can advertise that we have such a thing, participate in solar power, that's how we do it. I checked to see if companies who participate in the solar power thing, if they have any tax advantage, that's the first thing I thought of at once. They participate in that, they're gonna get out of paying sales tax, so they're gonna feel something. That's not the case. The advantage for them is like us in that they can say they are an environmentally sensitive company, and we could be an environmentally sensitive city. I talked to the gentleman at MPUA, Peggy talked to him first.
John Roxton.
Yeah. And another question was, if you have one of those outside the city, do they use electricity? He said, "Occasionally, but very..." He said, occasionally, but very minimal amount. I said, well, you know they'd be buying electricity from Show Me Power. How are we gonna do that? Well, the fact is, there has to be some kind of an agreement whereby that power is sent to MPUA over Show Me's lines and da-da-da-da-da. Normally, when they do that, these solar farms are within the city limits of the town that they supply power to, so it's not an issue. Lincoln, for example, is doing it, and some others are. So, uh, I emailed him back this evening and told him that we had talked about it and, uh, realized the advantages for us from the city, not financial, but a PR thing. But that, for the time being, we were gonna put it on hold. And, uh, wouldn't have been quite so bad if it'd been inside, within the city. But we don't have a twenty-acre plot of land hardly with, uh, I mean, we do, but, uh, not too many forty acres for a solar farm. So, for the time being, made the decision just, just to hold off. It's not something that we can't do, if we decided we want to.
Well, and MPUA stated, I think, to you that they have more solar power in their portfolio than, than.
And he told me that MP, MPUA has more solar power right now than probably all the companies.
They don't need it within their grid.
They've got a lot of.
And there's no financial advantage to us to do it at this time, so.
It's just, it's just environmentally.
There was this thing about, you know, Springfield was involved in a big acre large acreage and, and it's not in the city. It is somewhere way down around Stratford.
I think so.
I wonder how they work that.
Well, of course, they're, they should, they manufacture their own power.
Yeah, but that plant, or, kind of, if you wanna call it that, is in Stratford.
There's probably.
Well, they got to go across somebody's lines, so you're gonna have to buy.
It's not necessarily cheaper, alternative sources or not.
That was not cheaper, I mean, I didn't remember.
Did I not read where your electrical rate on that kinda power in Springfield was gonna cost you a little bit more?
Yeah, it was, it was quite a bit more. The best I can remember, that's when a few years.
But that wouldn't be the case with what we were talking about.
Not necessarily.
No.
But I'm not so sure that there wasn't, Springfield didn't have an investment in it, didn't it?
I'm sure. There'd be a profit somewhere along.
But I wondered how they, um, that was in Stratford, the best I can remember, maybe. That would be quite expensive, because you're gonna have to get that power from there back to Springfield.
Well, I don't know who owns the lines between the two, but they're gonna have to pay to use the lines, just like we pay today to use Show Me lines, a certain fee. But anyway, that, we were approached by that, for the time being. And, uh, I mentioned it, and if you decide we're more interested in it, you let me know. That's just, that's just that one side.
We might know a lot, maybe, Saturday.
Anyway, for the time, for the time being, we just kinda put it on hold. Uh, Suzanne.
Landscaping.
Oh, I like to always skip one. What are we gonna do on landscaping? It's time to fix it. I said, it's time to fix it.
Has, has Noel had a chance to really look at it?
Yeah, they'll be in it last week.
Last meeting, I had, we kinda wanted it again. What are you suggesting?
Well, I, I tell you what I would do. And I've told most of you, I'm no good at this kinda thing. I, I pick the plan I want and then I pay for it. And the, the, Eggleston is, is the plan I prefer. And he has more experience. Now, he's more expensive. But there's quite a difference in the plan. But as you know, four councilmen can do whatever they want to do. Cause you have more power than I do.
Eggleston, was that the one that was at, uh?
His wife teaches here and he lives in Michigan.
Yeah, one at Mansfield, yeah, one here, and then we got one at Frink.
Whitman.
Whitman, yeah.
Well, we kinda, I loved the Whitman thing, gosh, it was absolutely.
Yeah, but.
Man, but we're talking about thirty thousand or thirty or something.
Eight.
And that's, that's a bit over the top. Now, here's, here's the other deal, and I'll throw this out to you. If you choose to go with Zack, and there's a lot of difference there, and a lot of difference in plan, and I've told some of you already, that I will recommend, and, and, and if you're wanting to change the plan and talk to Zack and do all of that kinda stuff, I, I will ask that, that we make a committee of two to deal with it, and that you exclude me from it, cause I'm, I won't be any help on that, if you wanna do that. And then I threw, then I, I didn't tell you, I threw in at the end, then, if it doesn't look right. You know where the bus is, slide your guys right under it.
Noel, are you good at landscaping?
Then my wife tells me, what am I, quarter?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna be like Dave, but I'm not, I just don't get it.
Well, I'm, I'm not great to recommend Zack. I think Zack's done a great job on our retaining wall out here. He's, he's local, uh, he's got the minimum bid by, you know, it was ten thousand cheaper than the second one. I, I've looked at the plans and, and from what I see, I, I don't think there's that much difference in them. Uh, one, you're comparing a photograph of landscaping with a, with a diagram. That's one of the things that makes them appear different, but I'm in favor of Zack myself. One reason, he's the low bid, he's local, uh, done a good job for us in the past. And I wouldn't be afraid to be on the committee to support Zack in doing a landscaping here. The big difference between the two is Zack's does not have lighting. And I don't know that, you know, lighting is a cosmetic issue. I don't think we need lights shining on our shrubbery out here at night.
Well, that's just light, it's white fog.
Yeah, we have a light or a flat fog, but we've got an electrical department that knows a great deal about.
Do our own lighting.
Yeah, I think we can do our own lighting.
That's what we, I think we've talked about.
We talked about doing that anyway.
Own electric.
I would make the motion that we, uh, we hire Zack here and.
To hold him. Is that a second? I mean, yeah, I mean, I will be on that immediately, you're talking about it, we do. Okay, well, he's made a motion.
I made a motion.
So, do we have also two people on the committee?
Yeah, I want to make a motion.
We have a, a motion and a saying, any further discussion? Well, you're good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, so be it. I will call Zack and tell him. And, um, after the meeting, I'll give you guys his cell phone number also. And we're gonna expect it to really look good.
I can guarantee you one thing, it'll be cheaper.
Kind of a risk, we can just, we can give it a try.
But you know, it's, it's like a movie, it doesn't matter what the price is, the food's not any good.
So, what, what was his?
The only thing you need to change out of these is maybe a couple terraces.
Yeah, that's, I mentioned that today, but I like that.
Now, I, I will too. I've got this diagram from Whitman, but I cannot show that. He signed it and it's, it's really, it's really his. He really didn't wanna leave that with me, because what he's afraid of when he does that is, is that you're showing somebody, somebody's like, well, I, I can do it for fifteen thousand or less. So, it's, it's a beautiful deal, but I will let Zack and our committee, our landscaping expert committee. I doubt Zack. If he can get to it or not. I'll bet he can, he's, I've had him do work for me at home, did a good job. At least that's, I'm getting a work, I was telling him, trim, trimming stuff and, you know, it's getting to be a real chore, and, and he, he put gravel down. I don't know, talked to him once, did a good job. Uh, then to approve the court dockets, please.
Motion to approve.
I say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, do we have anything else, Suzanne? Did I get it all? Motion to let it close, please.
Motion to let it be closed.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.